We will now call a common council meeting of July 18th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski is excused. Alderman Lorik?
Here.
Ritz?
Here.
Marshall? Here. Gail?
Here.
Guzekowski?
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Matt, can I ask you to start us off?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business. We need to go back on the minutes from June 6th, 2023. They were held. So if everybody, please take a moment. Satisfied there's no errors, omissions, or discussion? Motion, please.
Clerk moves to approve the minutes of June 6th, 2023.
Petzl, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Present.
Gail?
Epstein.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Uh, Lorik?
Aye.
Quarterman of members present?
I wasn't there.
That'll move us to the approval of the minutes of June 6th, the 20th of June, 2023. Everybody take few moments to look those over, please. Anyone who's satisfied again that there's no corrections, errors, or discussion? Motion, please.
Clerk moves to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2023.
Petzl, second.
Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall? Present. Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Okay, on to recognition. Our first recognition is congratulations to Sandra Carvey. She is our 2022 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year. Catherine, would you please read that in?
Certainly.
For Sandra.
Congratulations to Shanda Caveney, 2022 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year. Whereas the Oak Creek Citizen of the Year Committee conducts an annual search for the person who, in its judgment, is most deserving of acknowledgement because of loyal, unselfish, and patriotic service to the community. And whereas the Oak Creek Citizen of the Year Committee has selected Shanda Caveney as its 2022 Citizen of the Year, for which she will be duly honored at a recognition dinner on Friday, July 14th, 2023. And whereas Shanda is married to her husband, Daniel, and has two children, Austin and Sierra. And whereas, while currently a resident of Caledonia, Shanda resided in Oak Creek for years, and the impact she made and continues to make on the Oak Creek community cannot be overlooked. And whereas Shanda has been employed by Waterstone Bank for over 10 years and has been the community president at their Howell Avenue Oak Creek location since 2019. And whereas through Waterstone Bank, Shanda worked to partner with WTMJ to collect items for their community baby shower. And whereas it was during her years at Waterstone Bank that Shanda became known to the Oak Creek community with various volunteer opportunities at the center and other organizations, including helping to arrange nearly $24,000 in sponsorships from Waterstone Bank in the past three years alone. And whereas Shanda is a member of the South Suburban Chamber of Congress and has been on the Oak Creek Community Center Board of Director for two years, where she has served as their treasurer. And whereas Shanda has been on the Oak Creek National Night Out Committee for three years, has been an Oak Creek client since 2016, and has volunteered as a Salvation Army bell ringer at Christmas time and was a judge for the Distinguished Young Women Scholarship, which provides scholarship opportunities to empower young women, reach their full potential, and become confident leaders. And whereas Shanda was involved for three years with her daughter with the Girl Scouts and was a member of the Oak Creek High School Quarterback Club while her son played football. And whereas, in addition to her many volunteer hours here in Oak Creek, Shanda also was on the South Milwaukee Heritage Day Parade Committee for 18 years, a parade funded solely by fundraisers ran by their volunteers year round. And whereas Shanda has volunteered at the Hunger Task Force Farm in Franklin, Wisconsin, a unique 208-acre farm that provides half a million pounds of fresh fruit and veggies into local food banks each growing season in southeastern Wisconsin. Whereas through her commitment and passion for making a difference in the community by giving of herself hours of community service, she is truly deserving of this recognition. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby congratulate Shanda Caveney on being selected the 2022 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed, to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Shanda Caveney, passed and adopted this 18th day of July, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Does anybody have any words?
I do.
Lisa?
So I was privileged to be able to be at the ceremony on Friday, July 14th. It was lovely. Shanda is well-deserving, is a personal friend, and couldn't be more recognized by the city of Oak Creek and the Citizen of the Year.
Wonderful. I myself, I've had the privilege of working with her too on many of these different committees and volunteer efforts that she's done. Obviously, you can tell just by her resume on this proclamation that she is a soul that likes to give back to the city. None of this was fabricated either. She is dedicated over the years doing what she's doing. And as older person Marshall said, very well-deserved of being our Citizen of the Year for 2022. Our congratulations go out to her. With that, can we get a motion?
Marshall moves to, um, pass. Approve Council Proclamation Number 23-04 Congratulations to Shanda Caveney, 2022 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And next, we have a mayoral proclamation for the National Farmers Market Week, and that is from this coming August 7th through the 13th, 2023. Catherine?
Mayoral Proclamation, National Farmers Market Week, August 7th through August 13th, 2023. Whereas farmers markets continue to provide access to safe and nutritious food in the face of market disruptions, while also shortening supply chains and reinforcing a competitive food system, benefiting producers and consumers. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Agriculture recognizes the importance of expanding regional agricultural marketing opportunities that improve access to the Supplemental Nutritious Assistance Program, increase access to healthy, locally grown foods, and promote a more direct distribution of food to individuals and institutions, thereby reducing the overall climate impact of our supply chain. And whereas, farmers markets have evolved to serve as a set of vital hubs for rediscovering community, helping rural and urban communities reconnect with one another, and creating more equitable economic opportunities. And whereas, farmers markets embody the American spirit of overcoming challenges to build back better by contributing to the USDA's Food System Transformation Framework to enhance and strengthen a fair, competitive, and resilient food system. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bakievich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby designate the week of August 7th through 13th, 2023, as National Farmers Market Week and urge all citizens to celebrate Farmers Market with appropriate observances and activities, dated this 18th day of July, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody would like to speak on Farmers Market Week? Again, farmers markets are all the rage these days, and I'm proud to say we have one of the best ones in southeastern Wisconsin without a doubt. Local produce, products going out there, as Catherine read in the proclamation, serves vital purposes. Not only does it help feed communities, feed those most at need with our script program that goes on, at least in our community, but it helps bring our community together. And more importantly, helps these farmers fulfill their careers. This is what they're passionate about. This is what they do. This country wouldn't exist without them. So it's only fair, I think, and right that we recognize them during Farmers Market Week. As that is a mayoral proclamation, no action is needed. We'll get us to our public hearings. The very first is consideration of zoning text amendments to various tables in Chapter 17 of the Zoning and Sign Ordinance of the Municipal Code. With us tonight is Carrie. I knew you were here for a reason, Carrie.
Always here for a reason. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before you start, I gotta have Catherine read that in. You're here and you're throwing me off.
I know, it's just my aura. Public hearing number one is to consider proposed amendments to Tables 17.0304-B and 17.0304-C, Section 17.0403-D and 17.0414-B, 17.0414-D, 17.0414-U, Section 17.0505, Section 17.0605-A and 17.0605-E, Section 17.1001-D and G, and Section 17.1004-B of Chapter 17, Zoning and Sign Ordinance of the Municipal Code. Date of notice is June 21st, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Now Carrie's up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Plan Commission had reviewed several text amendments at their June 13th meeting, and some of these are pretty easy to understand, pretty quick to go through. A couple of them might have a few questions, so I'll get right into it. The use tables that are on the screen right now have a couple of corrections in them. What we would like to propose to council is that solar energy collection systems that are roof-mounted, so your typical solar arrays, are permitted uses in all zoning districts. We did have some instances where they were considered conditional uses, and since they are so very much ubiquitous now, we'd like to make that available as a permitted use. For ground systems, however, we would like those to remain conditional uses in all non-residential districts, just so that we are aware of those setback requirements and some context-sensitive situations where there might be some screening or setbacks that would be required for those certain areas. In park districts, what we would like to propose are garden plots for rent as conditional uses. Right now, they are conditional uses in, well, not in park districts. So this came about as a request, and this allows the city to also consider, on a context-sensitive basis as well, those areas in P1 Park District Zone properties where there might be some garden plots for rent. Now, this would go through the conditional use permit process, so that would go through the Plan Commission, ultimately Common Council, and then if necessary, go back to the Plan Commission for site and building plan review. It would be on a case-by-case basis. Also would clarify that artisan manufacturing uses are conditional uses in the B2 and B3 districts and permitted in B4. Are there any questions with the proposed uses for inclusion in the tables?
Great.
Yes?
Great. On the residential use of the solar panels or solar energy collection systems, do you have any feel for how many of the single-family homes, multifamily homes in Oak Creek actually use them?
We actually just had a multifamily residential.
I did, yeah.
Yes, that came through for a conditional use permit. We have seen them on another multifamily residential that actually came in before the code was adopted. They had that approved as part of site and building plan review. We do have multiple homes that have, single-family homes that have incorporated them, including at Lake Shore Commons.
Okay, do they typically have to, again, do some permitting process or notification with the utility then, or how does that?
Yes, they do have to.
So there's still a process? They need to go through the merits?
They still need to be permitted. They still need to have electrical permits. They still need to comply with, not necessarily notice, but stickers in compliance with fire department requirements for shut-offs. And they do need to coordinate with the energies.
So council, I just kinda ask you hold your questions. We are in a public hearing. We'll make three calls, and then we'll go for questions. Thank you.
Turning now to residential garages. The text amendment is requesting basically for us to have consistency in the code. We do have currently where up to 75% of the livable area for both single-family detached and single-family attached, to have detached garages up to 75%. We want to allow attached garages the same amount, just for consistency purposes. We kind of have gone through a couple of changes lately and realized that that would be kind of nonsensical to have an attached less than a detached garage. That would be the only change for both single-family attached and single-family detached. We are also proposing to clarify that side entry, excuse me, side-entry garages for single-family detached are allowed and are allowed under these particular standards. So we are allowing them to be set ahead of the principal structure, so in front of. And they are allowed to be considered part of the primary facade, so the front part of the home that faces the street. If the garage has the same exterior building materials as the home and the same design incorporates a window, so it kind of looks like one continuous facade. And if the driveway, garage access, and parking pad requirements in subsequent sections are also met. So those would be the conditions under which a side-entry garage, also meeting district setback requirements, would be allowed. Just a clarification. The only change that we are proposing for accessory dwelling units is to allow them within an existing detached garage. Right now, they are allowed above, but this doesn't necessarily allow for the conversion of an existing detached garage to be an accessory dwelling unit. We did get the question, which is why this is being proposed. It would still be subject to all the other requirements and restrictions. So no more than 800 square feet would be allowed or up to the maximum allowed by code as part of the living area of the home, but it does allow for a conversion of an existing garage. It does not necessarily allow for somebody to build a garage and also include an accessory dwelling unit. There are considerations if we were to allow that in the future. For accessory structures, what we've had a couple of concerns with is making sure that we have our accessory structure definitions and accessory building definitions and standards distinguished from each other to allow for people to understand what makes a deck, what makes an accessory structure, which is not a deck, and what makes an accessory building, and what standards are applicable to each. So for Section 170414D, this is basically calling out decks specifically, allowing up to 500 square feet for a maximum detached deck. So this would be your deck around a detached swimming pool, for instance. The accessory structure maximum size would be 400 square feet, and that's cumulative. So you're allowed two accessory structures on your property, and that would be up to 400 square feet between the two of them. Setbacks for accessory structures and deck would pretty much be the same. You'd have to be behind the primary building, meet the same setback for the district, and be a minimum of five feet from the rear property line. This is a lot of text, but what this is essentially clarifying is what constitutes a building from a structure from a deck. So we're adding some language for accessory buildings so that we can distinguish them better from accessory structures. There has been some confusion, well, what's the difference between a building and a structure? So a building will have added to it at least three walls and a roof and a permanent foundation or a floor. That'll distinguish from your typical kind of pergola gazebo, which doesn't necessarily have a floor or walls. Also kind of gives examples of what that includes, so garages and sheds, and what it excludes, so general farm buildings, your portable or temporary buildings, enclosures or structures. So anything temporary would fall under the temporary use permit requirements. For structures, we're distinguishing that they may or may not have a permanent foundation, but they don't have to have walls and they don't have to have a floor. They shall include, but not be limited to lean-to's, gazebos, pergolas, basically your open-air kind of structures. This is also stating that your portable or temporary structures are prohibited, and that was at the recommendation of the Plan Commission to say prohibited. Decks are not considered accessory structures. They do require permits, and they are distinguished in the next definition, which also states that they may be attached or detached from the principal structure. But freestanding decks or your detached decks are not considered accessory structures for permitting purposes. So these are all clarifications based on questions that we've received. For landscaping, we are clarifying the introductory paragraph to Section 170505, which is stating that residential developments are subject to the tree preservation ordinance. We are stating, excuse me, we are stating this for specifically developments, not necessarily somebody who's coming in, putting in a single-family residential home, but we'll work through the process with them as well. We just want to put everybody on notice that the city of Oak Creek is applying landscaping standards that are trying to get at clear-cutting essentially. But we'll continue to work with applicants as they come through. This is also stating that for street-facing side-yard fences in residential districts that are proposed to be over four feet in height, they must include landscaping, and we've included some standards here because the code was a little bit vague previously. So these standards include a minimum of one tree with a minimum caliper, one shrubber bush with a minimum height, or one group of perennial plantings per 15 feet of fence length that is being proposed. Also clarifies where the requirements for the landscaping begin, so it's at the beginning of the construction of the fence, and it gives a distance between the fence and the street. And also clarifies that if you enter into a rounding situation where you have an odd number for the fence, an odd length, you are going to be required to put in no less than two of those options, so two trees, two bushes, or two groups of perennial plantings. And then obviously, if you're over five or 1.5, you round up, and if you're under, that you round down. Just kind of giving some more guidance to applicants. For signs, we are allowing sign bases to be no less than the minimum width of, or no less than the width of the proposed sign face. Currently, we have a range that says that the base shall extend between 10% and 25% of the face width. That doesn't really allow for a lot of flexibility in design. It also doesn't allow for a lot of flexibility in kind of more aesthetic design or unique design. So this is allowing a little bit of a change to the base requirements. We are also adding real estate post-signs as a new category to get at some temporary signs that we've been struggling with, to be honest, on those properties that are for sale. So we are clarifying that on all properties that are proposing to have real estate signs, a maximum of 32 square feet, no taller than six, a maximum number of two on separate frontages, 10 feet from the right-of-way, which is consistent with all the other signs that are, all the other sign requirements for temporary signs. And we are allowing a display period that is more than what we allow for temporary signs in general, up to 90 continuous days and two display periods per year. So that would effectively allow for up to 180 days in a calendar here for this sign to be posted. It would also require a permit. Those are the proposed changes that we have before the council and happy to answer any questions at the close of the hearing. Mr. Mayor?
Great. Thank you, Carrie. As this is a public hearing, we will make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium, give your name and address. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Martin Ventura. I live in Milwaukee and run a program through Extension Milwaukee County through UW-Madison Division of Extension, where we operate currently eight community gardens in and around Milwaukee County, including in Oak Creek. The origin of this point of business is that senior planner, Papelbon, contacted a member of my staff in early March and flagged an inconsistency in city code, which was, at that point, unknown to anybody in UW Extension. We, it turned out that we were operating out of compliance with Oak Creek City Code by having garden plots for rent available in Oak Creek. And since then, I've been tremendously grateful for the guidance of senior planner Papelbon in moving toward rectifying this issue. A bit of backstory, this program has existed for close to 50 years, exactly. The first garden groundbreaking took place in 1973 in Milwaukee County. And since then, my predecessor, Dennis Lukashevsky, built a very enormous and sprawling program. Well, codes change and people overlook doing the due diligence, and I am in the situation of now rectifying an awful lot of due diligence, and this is one piece of that. So I will speak simply to the tremendous benefit conferred onto community food security by the presence of community gardens. There are numerous studies which indicate that surrounding property values actually increase with the presence of community gardens. And I want to stress that I believe there's wisdom in this process insofar as this is a context-sensitive request. So we are not requesting carte blanche. We're merely asking the ability to have the conversation toward compliance. So with that, I thank you all for hearing this issue and am grateful for your time and would, if I am allowed, answer any questions that are arising from common council members.
At this time, Mart. Thank you.
Thank you all.
We now have Meg Clark. Meg, would you like to come up and speak?
Yes, my name is Meg Clark. I'm a resident of.
You can pull it down.
Oh, yep. Thank you. My name is Meg Clark. I'm a resident of South Milwaukee. Thank you so much for giving me a chance to speak just briefly. I am a new and very grateful gardener at the Forest Hill Community Gardens here in Oak Creek. Previously, I was at the Rossin Avenue, and we had to leave because of FAA compliance. And the garden means everything to me as an elderly gardener. I'm out there getting exercise, providing good, healthy food to my household all year round. It builds community, and it helps families as we share across the generations all the joys of gardening. And I just really hope that we can continue, and we're very grateful for the opportunity to be here now. So, thank you.
And I have one more. Mr. Lambrecht? Would you like to come up and speak, please?
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for allowing the farmers markets continue. The people in the community garden, as we get more established, because we have, quite a few of us have moved from Rossin, we will be able to also contribute to those farmers markets. And I think our food is far and above theirs. But it's healthier because of our small size. We put more time and effort into each product that we make. And the people in the community back here, that's a small part of the people. But some of the younger people in Oak Creek who live in these apartments around here, they have no place to garden. And for some of the jobs that they do, they need that outlet just for their psychological well-being. And I think that's the greatest thing that our community gardens offer. It's a smaller community, but it helps people focus on being good citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This will now be the second call. Anybody wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment card.
Yes.
They are not wishing for it to be read into the record. They would just like it to become part of the record.
Okay, for part of the record, the comment is, "We support the community garden program, a valuable program for the gardeners in the urban areas. It serves people of all backgrounds and ages to work at the gardens. The gardens are very much appreciated by us. They keep us healthy and strong." So thank you for that comment. We appreciate it. Up to the third call. Up to the third call, third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, we will now close public hearing, go on to consideration of that zoning text amendment of the various tables of chapter seventeen. I'll open it up to the council of questions and comments, and I know we covered a lot. Hopefully, you're taking notes. Anybody?
I do.
Lisa.
Carrie, can you go a little bit more into the real estate signs and how that's going to be permitted?
So, real estate signs fall under temporary signs at the moment. And temporary signs are limited to fourteen days up to thirty with director approval and a maximum of three display periods per year. So we've heard from the real estate community that that's just not sufficient. What we have done is taken a look at a few other communities who are incorporating more lenient or realistic, shall we say, considerations for these types of signs. Specifically, we've taken from, taken guidance from Verona and I believe Sun Prairie. There are a few other locations that specifically call out these types of signs. So what we are hoping this will get at is the amount of time specifically that these signs can be posted on a property. Right now, it's also limited in terms of how many square feet you get, so this is giving them a little bit more. It would still require a temporary sign permit, and it would be under the real estate section of code that we would be issuing temporary sign permit. Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Chris, Ken?
Yeah. Carrie, just to continue on that, so this is, this is not only transitory for sale signs, this is the habitual for lease, open space stuff we see planted in the ground around here for years on end, it appears.
It would, it would apply to those signs as well. So any kind of temporary, we're just calling them real estate signs. The reason that we say post signs is because those are kind of the traditional real estate signs that we see. So either the two posts with kind of like the wooden banner, if you will, or your, you know, residential home kind of on a post, real estate sign. We've also seen the, they look like Vs, so they basically have two sign faces, but it's still a total of thirty-two square feet. We've seen those signs as well. That's exactly what we're trying to get at here, is we're trying to capture those particular signs and say up to a hundred and eighty days per calendar year essentially. If they want something longer than that, they also have the opportunity to go to the plan commission, ask for a longer display period, and that would be on a case-by-case basis.
I'm kind of done with the perpetual sign displays. And that poll process, I wouldn't want to see continued or appeased at all. And thirty-two square feet is, it does eight by four, that's-
That's what we allow for like the ground banners, so the temporary banners that you see with the events, that's about as big as they would get.
Problem is, they're temporary. They go away.
They go away.
Rather than these other things that tend to sit for months. I'd prefer to actually be a little more conservative on these sign size and display period. So it'd be interesting to hear what other people have to say on that matter. I had one other thought, Carrie, too, and Doug, you may know this too, off the top. Garden plots for rent, where, there appears to be something operating already that, I don't know where it is, so.
Of course.
East of the railroad tracks, is that, or where is it right now?
Yes.
On the north side of the road?
Yes.
Yep.
Understandable, yeah, but in terms of a condition, that would, that would, future ones would come in front of planning.
Right, right. We're working through that process, so that-
So this is, this is kind of a-
This is step one.
Make do with something that's already there, so understandable. So I'd appreciate anyone else, any thought on the real estate signs.
Okay, first, Andrew.
If I could, and I tend to agree with that, it's not necessarily an advertisement for the land or the lease available as much as it is the real estate company itself, and I think that's the crux of the issue. And Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, these may have been earlier conversations during the zoning code rewrite, but on the, the for-lease space, if that building is for, if that building is fully leased, that sign then counts towards one of the tenant signs, and so if it's at full, at least they come down, or did we just discuss that as an alternative and maybe not in the-
Yeah, I think from that perspective, obviously, and I know everyone knows you can't regulate signs based on content, so if they wanted to keep a sign saying X, Y, Z Realty up there, that could count towards one of their allowable signs, the development. And really, kind of speaking of the genesis of, of the amendment, working with the Commercial Real Estate Group, with some of their members that identified that the standards in the new code, in the new zoning code, it's not really new anymore, it's over, over a year old, but we're a bit more stringent than some of our prior communities, and they were just looking for something that's a little bit more consistent, you know, totally agree, and we're not here to say that we're going to be approving, like Ken mentioned, Lemon Gale mentioned, perpetual for lease signs out there, but rotating sign permits every fourteen days may have been a bit on the extreme side for some of the buildings, some of the developments, and we feel that's a, that's a fair and it's appropriate time, amount of time to get your lease up, to get things going, but you're absolutely correct. I mean, this does not allow for, you know, and there's some offenders out there, you know, that have been in the ground for ten years and they still got their lease signs up, so it's, it's kind of a compromise on both, from both parties.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Chris?
I just want to talk about the, the garden plots. I fully support them. I want to make sure that the, the ones that are currently existing, or the one, the Forest Hill one, that, that they're not going to, you know, be asked to shut down or anything like that, that they can continue doing what they're doing there. It's a, it's a good setup over there, so I don't know if you guys have been over there to see it, but it's a really a nice setup. It's really, we're really lucky to have it in our own backyard, and you'd be surprised how many locals from Oak Creek actually go and use it, so.
Any other conversation, thoughts?
No.
I kind of agree with Doug, you know, when it came to the sign amendments, we came up with a proposal we thought was fair and equitable, allowed enough time for them to take care of business, lease up, and get out of there and put a limit on it for years, so that one's kind of been discussed. As far as the garden plots go, obviously, that's a popular subject tonight. I'm fully in support of it, without a doubt. They provide valuable stuff to the community, and as I said, it will come before plan commission. Each one will be looked at. We've had some private community gardens go in, the church over on Howell about a year or two ago did some plots there, proved to be successful. And Milwaukee has a really good reputation with them, particularly the one on Sixth and Howard, I believe, in the garden district, has been there for years, so it really serves a good purpose. Other than that, I have no more comments, other than thank our planning staff and our zoning staff for all the work that goes into this, because it gets, gets complicated and probably tedious at times, too. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, motion on eight.
Marshal moves to adopt ordinance number three zero seven seven, an ordinance to amend table seventeen dot zero three zero four subsection B and seventeen zero three zero four C, section seventeen dot zero four zero three subsection D and E, section seventeen dash zero four dash one four subsection B, D, and U, section seventeen dot zero five zero five, section seventeen dot zero five zero seven A subsection five, section seventeen dot zero six zero four B six and subsection C six, section seventeen dot zero six zero five subsection A and E, section seventeen dot zero, seventeen dot one zero zero one subsection D and G, and section seventeen dot one zero zero four subsection B of chapter seventeen of the municipal code.
Gusekowski, your second. Full call.
Alderman Gusekowski.
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshal?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Thank you all. Our next public hearing is consideration of an official map amendment. It's proposed by Hillside Coffee, and it is for, it is to amend the official map for a portion of the properties, affects, affecting the properties at two twenty-five and two thirty-seven East Ryan. Catherine, would you read that in the record?
Certainly. Public hearing number two is to consider a proposal by Hillside Coffee House and the city of Oak Creek to amend the official map for a portion of the part of the northwest quarter of section twenty-eight, mapped, unimproved, right-of-way, affecting the properties at two two-five and two three-seven East Ryan Road. Applicant is Hillside Coffee House and city of Oak Creek. Legal description there follows. Date of notice, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Catherine. Doug?
Thank you, good evening. The applicant in this case, Hillside Coffee House, is requesting an amendment to the official map and the future road pattern as relates to the property at two thirty-seven East Ryan Road. And you can see that on your screen, the area in red is the, the area of the property owner, the dash black line, that's the official map as it exists today. You can see that the officially mapped streets provide access to not only these, this parcel, but to other parcels on the south side of Ryan Road through the coffee house property to Ryan Road. And the applicant is requesting that the proposed connection be removed on his property. And as part of that, and during the discussion with the applicant, staff may the, by extension, by remove, if the section on the applicant's property were to be removed, the section south of that on adjacent property would also need to be in effect removed. So that is what the proposal is at this point in time. You can kind of see that, the original request in red, the staff's edition in black. Officially mapped streets were developed and mapped and adopted by the city in the sixties and seventies, sometimes the eighties, and really to provide for an orderly development pattern and to ensure future access for all users and property owners within a certain area, to make sure that, you know, someone's access isn't cut off by other properties. And in this case, this provides a second point of access, or I should say, another point of access to the subdivision south of, of Ryan Road, east of Howell Avenue. It also provides the opportunity for those property owners along Ryan Road who've got some exceptionally deep lots, the ability to potentially work together to develop and construct a public street to law for additional subdivision. Historically, we've not seen a lot of that happening, just given the number of property owners involved, and so in many cases, you know, the economics just don't work out, but those are on the map nonetheless and do provide those opportunities. In this case, the removal of the officially mapped street does not preclude that from happening with those property owners that would just need to come through the streets from the subdivision to the south and closer to Shepherd Avenue. I will say that the adjacent property owner to actually to the south and to the, to the west, I'm sorry, did make a statement and have concern at the plan commission meeting that he wanted that to remain, and actually, we had suggestions to relocate that future street to the west a little bit, to, if you can kind of follow along with my cursor, and it shows that area that's kind of notched out at the west end of that property. This is all one property, and you certainly could do that. However, in discussions with Wisconsin Department of Transportation, that given that Ryan Road is a state highway, they even hear that they would not allow that that close to the intersection and with the current geometry of the medians in Ryan Road, so it would be staff's position that rather than be relocated, that if it's the council's pleasure, that the officially mapped street linking Ryan Road to the future map streets south be eliminated and not replaced. This is a public hearing. I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to amend the official map for this property, to please approach podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions and/or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, I will make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium. First call, name and address, sir.
Thank you, I'm Ralph Petraszewski. I'm the owner of two twenty-five East Ryan Road. I was here about a month ago, and I had a hard time hearing, some of the microphones weren't working.
Yeah, I think we were having some technical difficulties.
I have a hearing disability. I was in the air, air force for thirty-six and a half years, and even though you're feet from me, please use the microphones if you have questions. Thank you. I'm against the changing of proposed road. I'm in the process of selling both two eleven and two twenty-five East Ryan Road, and the road is part of my selling package, and a change would have a negative impact on my sale. The proposed road is important because it gives access to the turnaround in front of two thirty-seven. It affects not only my property, but the whole southeast corner of Howell Avenue and Ryan Road. It allows a business corner to receive westbound traffic from Ryan Road. Moving the proposed road would mean that traffic coming from the east towards Howell Avenue would have to make a U-turn at the intersection of Howell Avenue and Ryan Road. When the current Ryan Road was redone in around two thousand, I asked the state of Wisconsin to provide a turn into the property at two eleven. They said they could not do it because there just wasn't room. There is much development going on east of Howell Avenue, such as Lake Shore Communes, besides the fact that they say the traffic will double in ten years. We should look at the big picture and leave all options open for the development of traffic flow into the southeast business corner. Right now, part, part of that is zoned residential, but I, I think everybody knows that that will be changed to business. So the whole corner will be a business property. The traffic in Oak Creek is getting very bad. Changing the proposed road would just make it worse. The current proposed road would also be an asset to the coffee shop. The road would give their customers on-street parking on both sides of the street because there was no other business in that area. It would provide more parking than the, than their lot would give, and at no cost. They would not have to build a lot, they would not have to pay annual taxes, they would not have to pay the maintenance or snow plowing in the winter. The road could also provide the coffee shop with another entry point to, on the backside of their property. It could be used for a drive-through or to make better use of the parking that they now have. They in effect would have a much-desired corner, business lot. And to close, the, the road as it is is an asset to all the people in Oak Creek and the great city of Oak Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do I have any questions?
Yes, I do, I do. Can I ask a question now or not?
Well, I was going to run through, run through the public hearing, and then we'll, we'll go to it.
We'll follow the process and then ask me a question. We'll follow the process and then I'll, I'll come back and ask your question.
Oh, okay, what do I do now?
You can just sit down for a moment, sir. Thank you. This will be the second call. Anybody wishing to speak on the public hearing? Third and final call. Anybody wishing to make comments? Please approach podium, please, sir. Approach podium. We will need your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Patterson. My wife, Rosemarie, and I own the Hillside Coffe Hills. We are the ones that made the initial proposal to have that proposed street eliminated from our property. The reason for that is our business has expanded in the last year or so. We're looking at building an additional parking area to the east of our current parking lot, and we can't accommodate that parking lot with that proposed road on the map. That's the reason why we're asking for the change. As far as what Mr. Petraszewski said, being an advantage to us, it definitely would not be an advantage for us to have a road come through there in any way. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thank you, sir. That was third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing, and we will go to ten and entertain any questions from council. Jim, let's start with you. with you.
Want to come back up?
Yes.
So what your proposal is, is make no change whatsoever?
That is correct. I'm in the process of selling it, and I have not signed any offers yet, but we got some contingency. It's currently marketed with new market reality.
And Doug, just to, for clarification purposes, there's one ingress from Ryan onto the properties?
Yes, it is.
There is. That's correct.
That's correct.
And that is in the center? Where is that located?
Basically, basically, just more east.
Looking at the map and the area that's overlaid on that, the current driveway to the coffee shop's parking lot is located opposite the median opening. And if I'm kind of following where you think you're going, the actual proposed street would not line up with that median.
No, it doesn't line up directly, but eastbound traffic could sell using.
Thank you very much.
Other questions, comments? Greg?
No questions, but comments. I mean, we discussed this in pretty great depth in Planning Commission, which is where I believe the idea of shifting the road over into the property of the individual who wants the road to stay while still removing it from the applicant who wants the road gone. We also talked a lot about if development were to occur, there's a lot of properties that need to get involved to let that entire road come through. And the applicant who is looking to eliminate the road would still need to give approval to sell their property to put a road in. And they absolutely do not want a road. As you can see, they want to build a parking lot there. So it passed Planning Commission after long discussion.
Thank you for the comments, Greg. Ken?
Doug, the only property that has the direct, actually, east-west access to Ryan Road, there is the coffee shop property, correct?
That's correct.
Every property serviced by Ryan Road is going to have to be from eastbound traffic.
That's correct.
And the state is likely never going to put another opening there.
You know, based on their current practices, I don't see them placing another median opening. They, you know, obviously could realign that if something happened, but I do not see another one, especially so close to that intersection.
But the property, or the potential Planning Commission fix would be able to be served by an eastbound entrance, right?
Yeah, I believe the removal of this officially mapped street would not preclude this individual from having driveway access in that location.
And Doug, can you identify the properties you mentioned, two-twenty-five, and which ones they actually are?
Here and here. So just west of the Coffee House.
No, I don't remember. I'm sure you do, because I remember it. Jewel had one time tried to consolidate these parcels, probably two decades ago.
I actually do remember that.
So they obviously had something in mind in terms of road pattern and things like that as well. So it's not out of the realm of real estate development that that is a consideration we have to make sure we're aware of. Because I would agree with the gentleman, this will be commercial, no matter what we have it looking at at this point.
And quite honestly, if that were to be the case, and granted, it would need a number of different legislative changes to make that happen, this road pattern would not work for commercial as it's laid out.
Yeah. So it would need to be altered no matter what.
That's correct.
Anyone else?
So to clarify, can I yield on that? So to clarify, the road pattern was made as a proposal for residential, correct?
That's correct.
Had nothing to do with commercial?
That's correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else? Chris, anything?
You guys talked about that planning. I was not at that meeting, so. But I do support what Hillside is trying to do here.
I'm not going to go on. Greg gave a good explanation of what went on at planning. Even for that road to go in, Hillside has to give permission anyways because it is a property of its ways, so that road most likely is never going to happen.
And maybe just one clarification. I mean, there may be some people who may not fully understand the officially mapped process. Just because that road shows up on the map does not mean that the city is going to put that in there, because as the policy stands right now, the city would not put that in. It would be the responsibility of those property owners to dedicate and fund deconstruction of that roadway.
Correct. And thank you for that clarification, Doug. And Greg is correct. You know, we talked about, you know, if they really wanted to try to keep something similar, flop it to the west side of the property, and try to go with a shared entrance of some sort of a shared driveway into that. But the proposal did pass after a lot of discussion.
You know, we always make the mistake, Danny, of thinking about current landowners. But you always said future landlords can do all kinds of things as well, so it's...
Correct. I mean, if they assemble the property, somebody can come in and put in proposed roads just the same.
If they really want.
So, because right now, there are lines on a map.
And is it correct that this can be removed, and then all the properties sell, and they request to put one right back there, and we can add it back to the official map in the future?
That process always is available to any property owner. And in fact, under the circumstance, for example, where there was someone who bought a number of those properties and wished to change those, and the change didn't affect any other properties, they wouldn't even need to amend that. Our process allows for property owners to change the lines if they only affect their property.
Any further discussion?
I think I would just comment that when you have conflicts like this, I often fall to the property owner's rights first. It is their land. And then, as far as economic development and sale of properties later on, there's a lot of outcomes that can happen. And, you know, we can't address all of those today.
Okay. With that, we'll look for a motion on ten.
Ritz will move to adopt resolution or amend ordinance number three oh seven eight, amending the official map for a portion of the northwest quarter of section twenty-eight mapped unimproved right-of-way affecting the properties at two-twenty-five and two-thirty-seven East Ryan Road.
Lorik will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to new business, is consideration of motion to approve the plan of finance for sixteen million two hundred and twenty thousand general obligation refunding bonds series twenty twenty-three D. Max?
Thank you, Mayor. Max Gagan, Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller. Before you tonight is the plan of finance, which is for the issuance of sixteen million two hundred and twenty thousand general obligation refunding bonds. And this is to permanently finance a note anticipation note that was issued in late July of two thousand twenty-one. And that note anticipation note was to fund phase one infrastructure and amenity costs for the Lake Shore Commons development, and that's per their finance development agreement, as well as a million dollars to do some soil remediation at the Lake Shore northwest and the former Peterborough property. So we're required to permanently refinance this by April first of two thousand twenty-four. And in working with Justin Fisher, the managing director of Baird, and really discussed wanting to have as much flexibility to enter the market sooner rather than later, just given this is such a large issuance size. And just for the council's perspective, twenty-five change, or a change of twenty-five basis points is about five hundred thousand dollars in interest. So, you know, it's really imperative that we have the maximum flexibility to enter the market. And with us tonight is Justin Fisher from Baird. He's their managing director of public finance. He's going to walk through the plan of finance, some of the assumptions, as well as looking at amortizations and cash flows. So, Justin?
Thanks, Max. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see everyone, a couple new faces. So good to see you. Tonight, what I'll walk through is the plan of finance, and really walk through the timeline, the structure of the financing Max kind of was talking about here. We'll talk about the financing illustrations in more detail, break it up into kind of more of the phase one, what this debt is related to, but also look at kind of the forward-looking picture of tid number thirteen as a whole, and how this all fits into the puzzle pieces. And then ultimately finish with the general obligation borrowing capacity for the city as a final piece. So if you go to page two of the presentation tonight, the city council will consider the plan of finance parameters resolution. This again gives the authority for the final sign-off of the note sale within the designated parameters to the city administrator or assistant city administrator. The preparations have already begun on the, are being made for the issuance of the sale. We are putting together the official statement right now, which, again, that's like the stock prospectus that will go out to potential purchasers of the bonds. So working with Max and his team on getting that put together. We have the bond rating scheduled next week with the Moody's. Right now, the city has a double-A-two bond credit rating. You've maintained that double-A-two over the years, and we continue to expect that that double-A-two will stay. And, you know, I think we've continued to hear good comments from Moody's, because on that call, we talk about everything going on in the city, all the development, you know, paying down the debt, being strategic about different initiatives and so forth. So that's something that Andrew, Max, and myself will be participating on next week. And then if the market is strong and meet council's parameters, we'll be in the market come mid-August potentially, and then closing at the end of August if the market cooperates. The estimated size here is sixteen million two hundred and twenty thousand, again, general obligation refunding bonds series twenty twenty-three D, is to refund the twenty twenty-one B NANS in tid number thirteen. It's a twenty-year structure, maturing April one, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand forty-three, with the first interest next year, April one of two thousand twenty-four, and callable April one, two thousand thirty, or any date thereafter. So in two thousand thirty, that's when you can look at refinancing or pay it off, et cetera. The estimated interest rate is a four-point-two-five percent. Is that a little conservative? Right now, if we were in the market, we'd probably be a little bit better than a four-point-two-five percent. But again, interest rates continue to be pretty volatile day over day. The Fed is continuing to look at, you know, are they going to raise rates one more time? Are they done? You know, what are they going to do? So it's very economic-driven right now. But in our planning for all of this, we've been using a five percent interest rate. So, you know, that's positive that even with our preliminary planning purposes, we should come in much better than our projections. So max parameter would be a five percent. So if we go to page three, not a lot of numbers on this page, but this is really looking at just this particular phase one of the tid number thirteen projects. So the left side of the page, that's the tax increment revenue. That's the revenue that's being generated from the projects on an annual basis. There's a little bit of outstanding existing debt there in column B. The middle of the page is what we're talking about tonight. And then there's some administrative costs we can attribute to this particular issuance. And then ultimately, you get to the combined debt service. The far right side of the page, that's what the annual net revenues may look like after paying, getting the revenues and paying the expenditures. And if you look at the bottom right of that page, you can see that overall, this phase one cash flows pretty nicely. So that's a, kind of give you comfort on this particular phase. Page four, if we go to that, this takes a look at tid number thirteen as a whole. So again, looking at column A, that's the projected revenues, and working with Max and Andrew and his team, you know, what are the potential revenues going to look like within this overall tax increment district? It does have the ability to receive donations from other successful tax increment districts if needed, as a nice safety net if things don't go as planned. And then ultimately, you got that column, see what takes everything into account. You have your existing, and then the issue that we're talking about tonight. And then you have future debt service that we've modeled in there, because there is some additional phases to this bigger project here that we're taking into account. And then you have the administrative costs, and then you can get to the total combined expenditures. So the total revenues minus the total expenditures gets you to the far right, the net revenues. And as you can see, it should perform very well, assuming all projections are met. So, you know, that's pretty good. It's music to my ears. And I think, you know, it makes these guys very, very happy as well to see this. So if we go to page five of the presentation here, this is the general obligation borrowing capacity for the city. I show you this, you know, once in a while to kind of give you a status update of where things stand. You know, the city continues to grow at a pretty high clip, and your bonding capacity is based on your equalized value. So if you're continuing to grow, that capacity continues to increase. The city has been very prudent in paying down debt very at a high clip. So in this little chart that you're seeing here, the black bars there, that's your existing principal payments being paid down on an annual basis. The green bars is what we're talking about tonight. And then kind of the red, orange, and light blue, that's the potential future borrowings related to tid number thirteen if they take place. So we're kind of modeling it all in. And then the gray bars that's remaining there, that's your available borrowing capacity that you have still available to you if you need it for whatever reason. So you can see that you have over sixty-three percent remaining after this financing. And, you know, as you continue to pay down debt and grow, and we're using a two percent growth factor, which has been very, very low compared to what you have been seeing over the last several years. But as Max knows, we like to be a little conservative in our planning and hopefully come in better than what we're projecting. So I think this gives you a good visual of that, you know, yes, you're getting investments done in your community, but you're also being very strategic about and paying down debt at the same time.
Okay. Questions for Justin? Comments?
Thank you.
Straight A's on that one. Very good. Okay. If there are no questions.
I do have one. You said it's not, I'm sorry, you said the annual growth rate is greater than two percent. What have the...
Max, you may know this better than me, but double digits.
Yeah, so Oak Creek's equalized value has grown from approximately ten to thirteen percent annually for the past five or six years.
That's a little bit above two percent, correct? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Motion on eleven.
Marshall moved to approve the plan of finance for sixteen million two hundred and twenty thousand in general obligation refunding bonds series two twenty twenty-three D.
Give a second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
And item twelve is consideration of resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed sixteen million two hundred and twenty thousand general obligation refunding bonds series twenty twenty-three D. Max?
So the parameters resolution authorizes the sale and designates that either the city administrator or assistant city administrator comptroller is authorized to sign the final certificate of the sale. And it does establish some parameters, so we do have guidelines we need to work in. And the main parameter for this is that the interest rate cannot exceed five percent. But as we've mentioned, you know, right now, we're estimating an interest rate about four-point-two-five percent. Again, and today's mark, that might be a little bit conservative. So certainly, if we're, we would not be selling if we got close, anywhere close to five percent, because as we mentioned, you know, with the size of an issuance, you know, a twenty-five basis point swing in that interest rate is significant money. So, you know, certainly, we'd look to anything four-point-two-five or less. But it does give us the ability to go up to five percent.
Questions, comments for Max? Okay. Seeing none, motion on twelve.
Marshall moves to approve resolution number one-two-four-one-eight-dash-zero-seven-one-eight-two-three, a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed sixteen million two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of general obligation refunding bonds series twenty twenty-three D.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Epstein.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item thirteen is consideration of motion to approve the purchase of electronic fold books, Badger Books, from Paragon Development Services.
Hi.
How often you get a speaking question?
Yeah, that's right. Okay, good evening. So this request is to purchase Badger, Badger Books, which is the electronic poll books for the city of Oak Creek elections. As you may have heard, or you may know, or if you live in another community, probably for about four or five years, electronic poll books have been in place in other municipalities. The electronic poll book simply takes the place of the signed paper copy poll books on election day at the polling locations. It also takes the place in Central Count where our poll workers work on behalf of our voters by tabulating and processing the absentee mailed-in and in-person absentee ballots. The electronic poll book works in that facility as well. So what the, what the request is for is to replace all of our manual processes that we currently have in place for voter registration, signed poll books, issuing voter numbers at the polling location, and here in Central Count for absentee ballots with the electronic poll book. The thought was that we would be moving to that for the elections in 2024, and currently, the Wisconsin Election Commission had come forward and said that they weren't going to do any new implementations or training post 1-1 of 2024, January 1st. So we really, we're kind of forced to go ahead and move now so that we can get these in place and have all of our staff, our poll workers, our chief inspectors, and essentially our voters trained on the new electronic poll book process for the very busy 2024 election season. There's four elections next year, including a presidential primary as well as a presidential general election. So we're hoping that if we can go ahead and get this purchased by September, we can start all of our training processes and changing all of our manual process that we have in place. One very exciting thing for us that we're, you know, eager to learn and move towards is with the new poll books onsite on election day in the state of Wisconsin, you can register on election day in person at your polling location, and this would remove the manual process. It would be as if you were going online and registering yourself, but working with the poll worker for your proof of residence. So that process currently on a busy election, we have data entry post of an election of maybe two thousand to five thousand voter registrations that we need to manually data entry post-election. It takes us weeks to reconcile an election, and that would all be complete and uploaded on election day. The one thing that I want to point out with the electronic poll books for our voters and for all of you is that these electronic poll books aren't connected to an internet during the election day. How they work is prior to the election, we have a backend system called WISVOTE. It houses all of our election, all of our voter participation, voter registration information for everyone in the state of Wisconsin. For the city of Oak Creek, both the deputy clerk and myself maintain that information for accuracy, new voters, voters who have moved out of the municipality, address updates, et cetera. So prior to the election, what we do is there is one server of these Badger Books, one of the poll books, that will house the city of Oak Creek information. So part of our role is to download the city of Oak Creek information into each server that will be located at each polling location. So for the city, we're divided into six different polling locations with an additional one here for Central Count for processing all that early voting. Once those are downloaded, there's, there's really no internet connection at all. We download that out of our system, and then that server is uploaded. It's kind of a data storage. So on election day, when the voters are coming in and pulling up their name to account for their voter participation, to enter in new voter registrations or make changes for names or addresses, that's all working off that server copy of that poll book at that location. Once the election is done and closed, voting's done for the day, the next day, we upload all of that information back into the system. So we have asked for redundancy at the locations. The recommendation is eight hundred voters to a thousand voters per poll book, electronic poll book. And our locations typically range from twenty-eight hundred to about thirty-eight hundred voters per location. So we've asked for four electronic poll books per location to accommodate all the voters, all the voter registration, and of course, one of those server books. I don't anticipate that the training will be especially difficult. It's just going to be quite lengthy to get through all of our poll, poll workers currently with, coming off a governor election and then going into a presidential, I probably have about a hundred and forty poll workers that will need to be trained in addition to the city clerk staff in the office. Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, it was a lot of information, but very valuable. Thank you.
Too much information?
No, 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 not at all. You know, elections are, you know, the integrity of our elections are vital to everything we do, so thank you for what you're doing. Again, it's a much-needed process in the election process.
So all cities of our size will be doing this?
So many cities, at this point, it's not a required implementation. Many cities have chosen to roll out the electronic poll book in stages or phases. We chose not to do that because there's confusion for voters, and it's a merging of the two processes. And really, we believe for data integrity, that we need to stay in one system. So smaller, some smaller municipalities within the state have merged, have already gone to poll books, and they may only have one location with one poll book, so much less costly effort for them. You know, there's been some other cities that were part of an implementation, you know, a, a trial basis where they maybe put one location, City Milwaukee was part of that, Madison, Franklin, I know, did that as well. But for us, we're in a really good place that I think, putting it all out at once. One thing I neglected to add, which is probably surprising, is that we are going to do a lot of voter communication. On the back of every water utility bill, water and sewer utility bill, we will put a notice on every tax payment letter that goes out, every tax bill, we will have notice. We will do website and social media communication in our Acorn, in our Current, and then we will also have at least a couple of days, either a Saturday, an evening, and then a daytime, when we can set up the Badger Books for the voters to come in and take a look and talk to us so that they feel comfortable and they understand the process. That's very important. It's one of the most important parts of implementation is that our voters trust our integrity. So that, you know, we plan to do a lot of different, you know, education for, internally here for staff and for voters.
I would think the public understanding that it's a closed network would be that paramount in this day and age.
I think that's, yeah, I would, I would completely agree. And even explaining a little bit further, I really enjoy spending time talking with voters so that they understand how our voting machines on the day of election aren't connected to the internet. They are not. So once we get that face-to-face with the voter, it seems to really improve, you know, how, how the elections are viewed here in the city.
Any other questions for Catherine? Okay. Seeing none. Motion on thirteen.
Yeah, move to approve the purchase of electronic poll books from Paragon Development Services in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, sixty-five cents.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
And next, we have community development, and first is consideration of a resolution approving a condominium plat for the Royal Estates Condominiums for the property at 9102, 9120, and 9140 South 27th Street. Doug?
Thank you. The request is for approval of condo plat for the properties that were just mentioned. I won't repeat them again. It's for the Royal Estates Condominium. And the applicant is requesting this based on the recent approval of the planning and development for this, and I'll, I'll just kind of run through that just a little bit. It's already been approved, but it's, it's thirty-six attached single-family units, including stormwater retention and walking paths in the gazebo, and you can kind of see the, the layout as proposed here, this would, which would become part of the condominium plat. Really, this condominium plat identifies not only the parcels and the units in the domain, but also the common ownership and the areas that are commonly maintained throughout the development. It also stipulates the maintenance responsibilities for those common areas. The Plan Commission did review this request at the meeting of, what is it, June 27th, and did they recommend approval subject to a number of conditions, and therefore, the recommendation is that the council approve a resolution with 12421, approving the condo plat for the Royal Estates Condominium Association.
Thank you, Doug. Questions regarding Royal Estates Condominium? Okay. Seeing none. Motion?
Guzikowski makes a motion that the common council adopts Resolution Number 12421-071823, a resolution approving the condominium plat for Royal Estates Condominium for the property at 9201, 9120, and 9140, South 27th Street.
Amendment that was 9102.
Yes, thank you, sir, about that.
Ritz, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzikowski?
Aye.
And item fifteen is consideration of a motion approving the waiver of the road and highway reservation affecting properties at 9102, 9120, and 9140, South 27th Street. Carrie?
So this is affecting those same properties that we just talked about for the condominium plat. In looking at the certified survey map to combine those properties, it was discovered in a 1954 and 1955 deed that there was a road reservation along the east side of those properties. We have nothing on the books. City became incorporated in 1955, but there was nothing that was actually accepted, dedicated, or requested by the city, or the town in that case. It was between two private entities as part of a deed. But because this was considered a cloud-on-title, worked with the landowner, their representation, their surveyors came to a, a conclusion that in order to clear this up, a resolution to kind of just waive any right that we would have to that reservation is the only way to really clear it per statute. So we don't need it. It doesn't really serve a purpose for us. We never requested it in the first place, so we're asking the council to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign this resolution, basically just saying, this is no longer going to be an issue. We don't need this. It can go away.
Questions for Carrie? Okay. Seeing none. Motion on fifteen.
Guzikowski makes a motion to common council adopt a motion to approve the waiver of road and highway reservation affecting the properties at 9102, 9120, and 9140, South 27th Street.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
And item sixteen is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Mathias Chapa and Nicole Rolfsen and Bernie and Carol Weed for the properties at 9709 South Howell Avenue and 9676 South Fox Run. Doug?
Thank you. The applicants are requesting approval of the CSM, which divides and reconfigures the properties at 9709 South Howell Avenue and 9676 South Fox Run. So approximately four tenths of an acre is being proposed to be divided from the western portion, 9709, and you can kind of see that here, and be combined with the existing property at 9676 South Fox Run. Both properties will remain in conformance with the Balkan dimensional standards of the zoning districts, the respective zoning districts, although I will note, and the staff report notes that, there is a split zoning that will need to be rectified in the future, as part of a future request. With that in mind, the commission did review this. They have recommended approval, subject to a number of conditions. Therefore, the recommendation is for approval of Resolution 12422.
Doug? Questions regarding the property at Fox Run and Howell? Okay. Seeing none. Motion?
Yeah, move to approve Resolution 12422-071823, approving a certified survey map submitted by Mathias Chapa and Nicole Rolfsen and Bernie and Carol Weed for the properties on 9709 South Howell and 9676 South Fox Run.
Guzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
And in engineering is item seventeen, and that is consideration of a resolution approving the Haydale Oak Creek Development Agreement with C.R. Oak Creek Land LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 2231 West Pute's Road. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Sullivan, city engineer. Before you as stated is the resolution for approving the Hayday Development Agreement. This is a development of PUD for twenty-two single-family attached buildings, which equates to one hundred and thirty single-family. There is a proposed public roadway from Pute's to the south, approximately eight hundred feet, that ends in a cul-de-sac that serves the development. The development agreement covers all of public infrastructure, including grading, sanitary, storm, roadway, and water main. This is a pretty standard agreement. Answer any questions?
Questions for Matt? Okay. Seeing none. Motion?
Guzikowski makes a motion that the common council adopts Resolution Number 12419-071823, approving the Hayday Oak Creek Development Agreement with C.R. Oak Creek Land LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 2231 West Pute's Road.
Go a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item eighteen is consideration of a resolution approving the Stormwater Management Practices Maintenance Agreement with C.R. Oak Creek Land LLC for the Hayday Oak Creek Development located at 2231 West Pute's Road. Once again, Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. This is once again, one of our standard agreements that we have for stormwater maintenance. The stormwater plan has been approved and put into place. This is just another step that satisfies in accordance with Section 13 of our municipal code. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matt on the stormwater standard? Okay. Seeing none. Motion?
Guzikowski moves the common council accepts Resolution Number 12420-071823, a resolution approving the stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with C.R. Oak Creek Land LLC for the Hayday Oak Creek Development located at 2231 West Pute's Road.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And item nineteen is consideration of a resolution approving the learning experience at Oak Creek Development Agreement with Oak Creek Forest Hill LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 150 West Forest Hill Avenue. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, this is our standard development agreement. This one actually only covers public improvements, which are water and sanitary, and some repair on Forest Hill for those improvements. Once again, this is standard practice, putting in requirements for the developer. Be happy to answer any questions.
I mean, Doug, do you have a timing on start on this project?
There, it, we have not had a pre-construction on this yet. They've been waiting to get this in place along with the CSM, which is now in place, so once it's been...
Is there permission still in place though?
Any other questions? Discussion? Seeing none. Motion?
Lorick moves to adopt Resolution Number 12423-071823, approving the learning experience at Oak Creek Development Agreement with Oak Creek Forest Hill LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 150 West Forest Hill Avenue.
Go a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick? Alderman and Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
And our vendor summary reports. So item 21 is consideration of a motion to approve the June 28, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of 1,900... 1 million...
There we go.
Yeah, I know. You're really messing this up. Please take a look at your sheet, and if there's any questions, please feel free to take the floor. When you're sure there's no questions or discussion, motion?
Marshall moved to approve the June 28, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of 1,900,000... 1 million...
There we go.
Yeah, I know. You're really messing this up. $9,993.29. Please take a look at your sheet, and if there's any questions, please feel free to take the floor. When you're sure there's no questions or discussion, motion?
Marshall moved to approve the June 28, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of 1,9993.29.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
And item 22 is consideration of a motion to approve the July 12, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of 837,119.59. Please, once again, take a look at your vendor summary report, and feel free to take the floor with any questions. By chance, do all the bond refunds happen in the same month? Or is that just coincidence?
That's just a coincidence.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, questions? Motion?
We'll move to approve the July 12, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of 837,119.59. Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item 23 is a resolution authorizing payments of bills, debts, and obligations.
Just keep the lights on.
Anybody want to expand on that?
Keep the lights on, but we're not working, right? For a couple of weeks, though. Well, these guys will be working. Because we're skipping our first meeting in August.
Yeah, well, usually they give the date. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none. Motion?
We'll move to approve resolution 12417-071823, authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations. Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Okay. Where we adjourn, occasionally people will tell me the city's going to the dogs. I disagree with that, and that is not true. But this weekend, Drexel Town Square is going to the dogs. We do have our annual Dog Day event going on, so dogs will rule the roost at Drexel Town Square. If you do have time this weekend, please check it out. It is one of our most popular events, and bring your four-legged friend with you. That is really it. If there's no other announcements or comments, adjournment, please.
Lorick moves to adjourn.
Ritzel, second.
Roll call.
Alderman and Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.